Welcome, everybody. Staff meeting for Tuesday, July 23rd. Manager's talk. Let's take it away.
Chairman, good morning, Commission. One topic today that I want to spend some time just in a non-formal environment kind of talking about is the discussion we get from the bench on moving some property tax areas to a sales tax type of model. There has been some short discussion from the Commission on the bench on this. I've talked privately with many of you, and there seems to be a universal interest in this. So I thought maybe it'd be a chance in publicly today to just kind of troubleshoot and talk through that. There are, there are two kind of two potentials out there that have been discussed by commissioners. One is just to focus on the county and what we provide, and Lindsay will be here shortly, but we roughly spend eighteen or nineteen million a year on what we would consider culture, arts, entertainment and parks. So if we would want to, as the county, create a situation where we'd reduce the mills down by a certain level in exchange for that tax, that we could work that through. There's also a discussion that's happening in a number of political circles, including ours, that we do something more comprehensive as a region, which is more reform-minded than, than maybe the, the previous option. So I think I'd like to hear the discussion from the Commission today. Lindsay was, will be here. If there's any specific dollar or numbers asked, we'll be able to answer those questions. It will, we'll have the debate today.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Commissioner?
Thank you, Chairman. So I've been, I've been talking about this for a while, maybe more than a year or two, I suppose, but I have talked about with our current revenues dedicating certain amount of sales tax towards these culture and arts things. I think the better idea, I think this is something that's happened, maybe even last year, I've been working on mentally at least, is the idea of about an eighth of a cent sales tax that we generate around, just under eighteen million dollars right now. And if you look at what we provide to discretionary partners, if you will, and I just throw out their exploration place and the zoo top two, but it also includes like Lake Haven, Central County Park, all of our parks, Tecam Historical Museum. Then you can add in things, add in things like Project Access, Child Advocacy Center, Extension Center, and a few other things. You get to about thirteen, twelve or thirteen things that come up and kiss that eighteen million dollar number. And so to me, the, the question should be to the public is if we, and my idea, my total idea is this, we'd have to go to the legislature and get them to approve it. And, and the way to sell this, if you ask people, do you want to raise the sales tax? The answer is going to be no. But if you put it in a, in a context that says we will lower the mill levy by three and a half mills, and we'll put a five-year sunset on this, and it has to be reapproved by the voters a second time after the five-year mark. To me, that's something that they may be interested in. I would like to say we would never, never fund those things ever again through property taxes. It would be forever funded through sales tax. And that, to me, is the internal structural guardrail that we create. It says, we're not going to find those things with, with property tax. They, they must be funded through sales tax. If the economy thrives and there's growth in the economy, then the sales tax generates more money. And that, that eighth of a cent generates more money they can share between them. And we ought, we would have to have some type of a advisory board that would create recommendations for it to be adopted by the Commission on how that money should be split up. But it's a zero same game of dollars. And if the economy goes into recession, they all have to tighten their belts. And again, you'll figure out how that, how that gets shared between those organizations. But this will never, these will never be funded again through property tax. And my intent is the five-year sunset is to prove it to the people that we are serious. My concern about the other idea is the complexity of it. We're talking twenty cities, twenty mayors, a hundred city council members or more. Twenty different budgets, actually adding ours, twenty-one budgets. And for them to buy down their property tax funds, bear in mind, most of the cities have sales taxes already, or they can, or they have tax authority. They can pass their own sales tax and offset their parks and their recreation as much as they want to. Cities already have authority. They don't need to complicate things by trying to do, by trying to do this together. It's unnecessary complexity. And then you have to ask the question, what happens if one city fails to do the job? Then what do you do with the rest of this? Because the entire thing begins to fall apart. Second of all, we already have a one percent sales tax, which most of it goes to Wichita. Eighty-seven million dollars this year is going to Wichita. I don't know that we would need a one percent, but let's just play with the one percent number. Actually, say it's a half percent because that would generate about twenty million dollars for Sedgwick County. So a half percent sales tax, I would assume Wichita would get a little more than forty million dollars in that situation. They don't need forty million dollars for the parks and rec. I think it's too much. And as you change the formula. And again, that formula is in the law right now is based on a lot of things like population and mill levy, which is what, what one of our complaints is, we get dinged if we lower the mill levy, we get dinged a second time on sales tax revenue from the state. Well, actually, our own sales tax revenue in that formula, we, we lose sales tax revenue if we lower the mill levy. But anyway, to, to use that model, in my opinion, is, is needlessly and overly complex. And it requires way too many people, and there's too much opportunity for failure. And I don't think the public trusts us. I think at the end of the day, we focus on ourselves. It's a very crisp proposal, eight cent sales tax, three and a half mills, five years. And we move those things over to prop, uh, sales tax forever and resolution. It would require a vote to undo that. And if in five years, the sales tax is not reaffirmed by the people, they understand they're, they're essentially voting for a three and a half mil property tax increase to restore it back to the way it was because they don't trust us. That's fine. But you give them the chance to, for us to explore this, and explore this and try this together. And along with that, the state of Kansas, in my personal opinion, needs to do a similar movement. I would, I would just challenge them to move the state office buildings from one and a half mills of statewide property tax, move that to other forms of revenue. And together, the state would do that forever, and we would do that forever. For our constituents, it's a five-mill decrease. And I think that's, that is a five-mill plan. We should, we should partner with the state and, and challenge them to do what we're going to do. And I think ultimately, this is a better form of government. When I knock on that door and say to that little old lady that's starving, that's starving and she can't buy food and she can't pay her electric bill. And she says, you're taxing me on my house. I can say, none of your taxes goes towards anything other than core functions of government, core functions of government. We are trying to, really, we had to be efficient and, and, and as small, you know, least expensive possible to, to provide the services that you demand are core functions of government, nothing. Because if they don't, if she doesn't go to the zoo, it's unfair for me to take her property tax dollars and subsidize someone else's zoo ticket, which is what we're doing today, to the tune of about ten dollars per person. I'm off, I didn't calculate that recently, but there is a number. You could say, well, by giving that money to the zoo, we're offsetting their, the cost of tickets essentially. By using property taxes, we put people who maybe don't use the zoo and can't afford it. So phone, you know, philosophically, I don't like using property tax for those types of things. It's much more appropriate to use proper sales tax. I think we need to move forward. I'm tired of talking about it. I think it's time to crisp this up and get to the legislature. And this idea, to me, is a distraction by talking about the other twenty cities. I just see, enters any, any logistical way to do that. It's just too complex. We're not making it easy. We're making it hard for no reason. Thank you.
Other thoughts? And Lindsay's here. If we have questions specifically on some of the numbers and the finance aspect of it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I truly believe we need to start looking at other ways of getting funding government rather than property tax. My concern is with Commissioner Howell's recommendation to just go our own way is remember, it's going to take a, a vote of the citizens in Sedgwick County. And if the cities in Sedgwick County are against that, it's never going to pass. I think we need to engage them upfront and find out what their thoughts are on this and make sure that we're working with cities as partners rather than going our own direction. I understand his, his concern, but we, we live in a political climate, and if we get the twenty cities that are opposed to it, it'll never pass. So so what we need to work on is how that we can move this forward so that it passes, so that we can provide property tax relief to our citizens.
Go ahead. As a comment back, Ian, I'm not asking the cities to support it or oppose it. I, you know, cities promote their own sales taxes. We don't get involved in their elections of their people. He's right that this would have to be voted on by the people we serve countywide. Cities have no reason to oppose this. This is our own budget, moving our budget from property taxes to sales taxes. On a personal level, I think that if, if they were listening to their constituents, if the, if the people are in favor of it, why would the cities be opposed? At the end of the day, this is going to go to the people. And, and again, I'm not raising revenue to the county. I'm simply shifting where it comes from. And again, we have a pull factor of around thirty percent. So thirty percent of the revenue coming into, through sales tax is not from Sedgwick County residents. And it should not be from property owners. It should be from people who spend money that is discretionary spending within Sedgwick County. If people don't understand that and they want to vote against it, that's fine. All, all, all that, all that we can do is package this up and give them an opportunity to lower their taxes, their property taxes. If they vote no, that's fine. But the cities should not take a position of opposition because this is not their, this is not their budget. And their citizens get to enjoy a three and a half mil decrease. If they, they should let their citizens vote. And they should not try to influence this by trying to kill it. Again, following the existing model of, of sales tax revenue sharing that's in statute for the one percent sales tax. Again, if that's why they'd be opposed, we'd have to go to about a half mill for, have to do the same thing. Try half to half a percent. So an eighth of a percent, if we do it our own, and half percent, if we follow that formula. And I, my opinion is, I don't, if Wichita wants to raise that, you know, the, their forty million dollars through a sales tax, they could put this on the ballot themselves. They can do that. I don't know that we need it to do that with them. They can encourage their citizens to put a an appropriate mill levy, I'm sorry, a sales tax question on the ballot to offset their culture and arts. They can do that. And I encourage them to explore the idea. If they believe that's an appropriate thing to do, they should do it themselves. But connecting this with twenty other cities, it's just, again, it's needlessly complex things.
Couple of questions. I'm sorry, I'm going to pepper you with some questions and, and then I give some thoughts as well. Can you quantify, what is the one cent sales tax generating the county now? That way the public understands.
So last year, actuals for between, because remember, it's a sales and use. So last year, the total is one hundred forty point eight million. And so I know Commissioner Howell had mentioned the one-eighth of a sales tax that would generate about seventeen point six million.
Okay, so let's work, let me do some math here. So half a cent is seventy million.
Yes.
Right? Quarter cent's thirty-five million. And seventeen point six on the eight cent. The pull factor, we've referenced some data, Kansas Partner of Revenue. What, what is that? What, what do they suggest the pull factors? Can you explain for the public what the pull factor is?
Sure. So the Department of Revenue every year goes out and looks at, based on the sales and use tax data that comes in, what is generated from folks who actually live within the geographic boundaries of a county or a city. And so for our area, we compute that it's twenty-seven percent. We round up to say thirty percent for simplicity. But our pull factor in Wichita means that, or in our area, it means that we're bringing in people from Hutchinson. We're bringing in people from other small counties around, come and do their shopping or do their work. And so the idea is then of the sales and use tax that's generated roughly twenty-seven percent of that comes from people who don't live in Sedgwick County. And so that is appealing to us because those are the folks using roads and infrastructure, probably going to the zoo, probably going to those types of amenities.
You're right. I mean, these are, these community assets, these quality of life assets are used by more people than outside of Sedgwick County. And the city share now, all cities share the one cent sales tax. You, you have a chart. I've seen a chart recently. Would you be able to email out a chart of what each city receives now on their, their share of that one cent?
Yes, absolutely. So that is another thing the state produces every six months. They give us an updated ratio. And so they go through and they look at that changing population and they look at that changing, they actually look at the property tax levy, so the dollars relative to everybody else's. And they give that to us every six months, and that's how we know how much we share. So I will, I don't know that they have the July report out yet, but certainly they have the January, and I can get that around.
That'd be helpful. A couple of thoughts. The first is, and I agree wholeheartedly on a lot of what Commissioner Howell and Commissioner Dennis have shared. I think this ultimately comes back to the concept of core services for the county. What, what are the core services of the county? What are ancillary services that we do and ancillary assets that we have and how do we fund them? Despite how largely I, and loudly I complain about property taxes, I fully understand that property taxes are the most stable, secure form of taxation to fund local government. I understand that. They are stable, and they should be used to fund the core services of what we do here, particularly in public safety. But they're also painful for people in many regards. When the assets are appreciating in value, two things are going up simultaneously, many times the property taxes, but also their insurance. And those that are on fixed income, their COLA adjustments from social security have not kept pace to the inflation that they're seeing with their bread and their gas and their, and everything else, all the goods and services that they're buying. And Commissioner Howell is right. We eye here, and I'm certain that my colleagues as well hear frequently from people that are not just complaining about property taxes. They are concerned they're being priced out of their homes. And I'll tell the public that this is beyond, many years ago, this was an R and D conversation. This was a partisan conversation. Some of the loudest people I hear from today that are fearful of what's happening are people that live in historic neighborhoods where they've seen significant appraisers in their evaluations and, and places like Riverside, places like Midtown, that are seeing significant adjustments, and they are fearful. So there's a painful element. This is the tension that we have as we've got to fund core services. Property taxes represent what, forty-two percent of our revenue at this point in time? So we're very dependent on these property taxes, but the increases in property taxes also will see diminishing returns for families in this community. And there's no way around that. I am full-heartedly in agreement that we've got to find a way to offset things that are not core services with other streams of revenue. We do it with comm care, with grants. We do it with other areas. I think sales tax for some of these community developments, some of these assets of quality of life, not only to offset from property taxes, but to help protect these organizations too. They've got to have a formulaic form of, of, of tax, of, of revenue somehow to protect them and get them off the political decisions that come with property taxes. And we are in the middle of that right now. All of these organizations are now in the middle of political decisions on, because we're not cutting the sheriff's office, at least I'm speaking from District Four. We're, we're likely not cutting EMS. We're not cutting fire. We're not cutting nine-one-one. In fact, we're investing into these areas. The places we have to go to are outside of core, and it's places like the zoo, it's places like Exploration Place, and we can protect them by getting them off of this stream of revenue. So let me tell you what I hear, because Commissioner Howell's been talking about this frequently, Commissioner Dennis has been talking about this frequently. Commissioner Lopez and I have had significant conversations about this and what this looks like, the same with Commissioner Meister. I've been talking about this when my quarterly updates from, to the cities and all the conversations, as we talked about it at a SCAC meeting previously. The feedback I get from the cities, because I'm very much in agreement with Commissioner Howell's plan. I have no real arguments with his plan. I just think that we have to have a stop before that to at least attempt a collaborative approach. Because when I present to the cities, they have the same problems we have. The cost of government is rising for these cities too. When we did eight point seven for the sheriff, I immediately had a conversation with Mays, Park City and Valley Senator, he said, we can't keep up. Like, we've got to have broader conversations of how we share services. Like, we can't keep up. This is a necessary stop, in my view, of saying, let's come to the table as a community, and let's lead as the county, the collaborator of the twenty cities. Let's lead in this effort. Bring them to the table and say, we have the same challenges you have. Is there a way that we can do this collectively? Because all the cities that I've talked to, in my district in particular, they want to be at the table. They also want to participate in these conversations. They want to share more services. They have the same challenges. And if we go alone and do this ourselves, they're going to have to address it separately. Which means instead of a half a cent of sales tax for the entire county, or a quarter cent of sales tax for the county, whatever mechanism we use, aside from that, there are an eighth of a cent, they're going to have to come on top of that. So I just think there's a conversation that could be had, and we could lead in that from a collaborative angle and really lead in the county to bring these cities together, to at least have the conversation. There could be a great chance that seventy-five percent of these cities say, you know what, we're going to do our own thing. Best of luck. And then we move forward because I think many of us are determined that we have to do something to offset property taxes. My position is I want to engage them first. I want to take the symbolic effort, partnership and collaboration to engage them first, to get their feedback. These are our partners, and they, and they expect us to lead in this fashion. So I'm very much in support of your plan. I just want to have one pit stop before to see if there's an effort to bring the community in to be more reform-minded.
So I actually have two questions in, in response to that. And actually, I have maybe a longer comment that I can do a little, little bit later here, but to your, to your idea, Chairman, I think we ought to have a list of the twenty cities and find out what is their current sales tax. When was it passed? What was it passed for? What's their, if for each of the twenty cities, what's their budget for culture and arts for those cities? Because I'm just imagining, for example, let's say the city of Cheney or the city of whatever Bentley has a sales tax, and what we're proposing is tax from this, from the entire county then going to fund, if you will, culture and art, quality of life issues across the entire county. Some cities have very little quality of life. I guess we, I'd like to have an understanding, you know, I think Derby has a huge amount of, of that. So having some data regarding those cities is, is imperative to putting this idea together. I think there's a lot of out-the-gate unfairness between, you know, if you were to pass a, a sales tax countywide, and you were trying to meet all of those needs, some cities are going to get a lot more money than other cities. You're almost encouraging them to spend a lot more money to, to get more money, so to speak, you know, to, to be qualified to receive those funds from that, from that source. And I guess my, my second question, I guess my, my other question would be, my comment on, on that part of it is cities already have this authority. In most cities in Sedgwick County, from my, from my anecdotal information, anecdotal knowledge, they've all passed sales taxes for the most part. And I don't know about every city, but I know that Mulvane and Derby both have dedicated much of their sales tax to quality of life stuff already. So again, I'm, I'm not, I'm not asking them to transfer that from sales tax to the county, and then that, then if you will, that frees up their own revenue for other things. I mean, money's fungible within those budgets. We have to be very careful about asking them to, to take those current funding models that they have in their respective cities and transferring that to the county. And we see that when we create new revenue streams. Think of the senior center mill levy. That's exactly what happened. Cities were funding their own, and when, when the county passed it, cities backed down and said, county's going to do this for us. Here we go. I think the idea of a stormwater mill levy, we talked about that in, in the past. One of the challenges, of course, is many cities have a stormwater fee. And I'm, I'm fearful that they would somehow transfer that back to the county, and then they would use their revenues for who knows what. So I, I'm concerned about the complexity and, and how this impacts decisions that they will make. Ultimately, this creates more revenue to those cities. I don't know that we are just changing sources of revenue. I think we're actually growing government because you're adding revenue to every city. And we have no guarantee on how they would use that money dollar for dollar. Are they going to, in fact, just transfer and reduce their mill levy? I don't know that they will. And unless they do that, I have not, I have no interest.
In fact, I can add a comment on that. I appreciate that. I agree. I don't think we should make any assumptions, which is why we should bring them to the table and ask them if they're willing to play ball here. We should not make any assumption of what these cities are going to do, but if we don't ask them, we don't know. And we deserve, these people deserve, these cities, our constituents deserve the leadership from the county that's willing to engage them on this front and not say, we're going to go about this alone, best of luck. But is there an opportunity that we can work together? And I would just contest that I actually think our community is asking us to be more collaborative in these, in these fashions. I think that they're asking us to get in the room with city leadership on municipal, the twenty cities, not just Wichita. Some of the heartache and the heartburn I get from some of the smaller cities in my district is that these conversations are only, en bancs are only happening with the city of Wichita. And they want to play ball too. They want to get at the table because they have the same challenges we have that the city of Wichita has. And I agree, we should not expect them. But I know for a fact, and this, two of the cities in my district is, is what they receive in a, in a half a cent sales tax, what they would receive would offset, and they can provide property tax relief to their citizens. So I, I just think that we got to engage the conversation. We shouldn't assume anything, but we don't know unless we ask them. And these are pretty smart people, these mayors and these city managers. They're incredibly smart people that have a pulse on their constituencies. I think if we get them in the room and we brainstorm collectively these ideas, I think we're going to learn a lot. And I think that's helpful. So I don't know of anybody else's cities. I know nothing of Cheney and Garden Plain, nothing about Hayesville, nothing about Derby's situation. But I can tell you, the cities in my district are asking for an opportunity to, to get to the table and just shape some of these outcomes.
Just a, is another, I guess, just a thing to understand, in case the public's listening, roughly, roughly five-eighths of our one percent sales tax goes to Wichita. They don't have their own sales tax. And yet they could do that at any time. And I would encourage them to, you know, some, find a way to convince their voters and their property taxpayers that they would be willing to do dollar for dollar reduction in the mill levy for a sales tax that's approved. If they want to package that up, I think that's a great idea. But understanding, you get about five-eighths of our sales tax currently. And if you do the math, it's been a year, maybe a year since I did the math here, but I believe that Derby, since they passed, actually, yours is actually higher than this now. Before they passed the increase in their sales tax, they went from half percent to one percent most recently. When you add in the county reduction in our mill levy due to the one percent sales tax. I, I have to make the out-the-gate argument that if it wasn't for the sales tax, we would fund the same things with property tax. We have no other choice. And so the sales tax was funded again, for infrastructure and for reducing property tax. And I will argue, it actually is doing that because I think we're committed to the things we fund. If it wasn't for the sales tax revenue, we would fund those things through property tax. And because of that truth, if you live in Wichita, you have a twenty-four mil rate, you have a twenty-four mil reduction today, right now. Because Wichita's eighty-seven million dollars, it was roughly eighteen mils of property tax on the city side. And the county's is right now around six mils, maybe I'm off a little bit, but around six mils. Maybe I'm off. You add that together, that's about twenty-four mils. If you live in the city of Derby, it's about forty mils altogether. So, but for the one percent sales tax that we provide, and again, Derby has their own sales tax. But, but for the sales taxes, those, those property taxpayers would see huge increases in property tax bill. So sales tax is in fact lowering property tax. And again, this, this argument that we just simply are going to grow government, you have to make the argument, are we going to be funding things that people don't want? Or are we going to be inefficient and be wasteful and spend money on things that we shouldn't be getting involved in? If that's the case, that is wasteful. If we're funding the things that people support and they want us, they want us to spend the money on those things, they, they support those things, then it truly is a property tax offset. And so if you live in Sedgwick County right now, out in the unincorporated, for example, you have a six mil reduction because of the one percent sales tax. If you live in a city like Wichita, twenty-four mils, or Derby, forty mils, there is advantages to having some sales tax come into the revenue stream. And this is just another way to move dependency from property taxes to sales taxes. I think we also have some other things we could do at the state level. They need to, they, they need to provide some funding to their offices at the state level. They would, again, help us get, get these offices off of property tax. We've thrown our hands up and say, there's nothing we can do. We're not advocating hard enough for correct sources of revenue, for whatever people feel like they have to have in the government. We, we need to be much more active in that. My opinion is, is I'm not willing to concede the argument that property taxes are high and there's nothing we can do. I think we can. But this is part of that process. And, and again, I would just like to make the point, we already are doing it. It already isn't hap, it's been happening since nineteen eighty-five.
Yeah. And thank you. I wasn't around when the one cent sales tax was passed, and I think the formula is flawed. Where every time that we cut the mill levy, we lose some of the, the one cent sales tax that's coming about. And I guess the opposite is true. If a city raises their mill levy, they're going to get more of the one cent sales tax. And I, I live in the city of Wichita. I heard one city councilman mention that they wanted to raise the mill levy two mils. So that concerns me on what the existing formula is. If we send this up to the legislature and ask them to, for some type of a sales tax, do we have to use that same formula, or can we come up with our own formula?
Great question.
As long as it is a part of what the ballot measure is, so think about the arena. We were able to have a specific ballot measure that was taken and then that was incorporated into statute that required that the full one percent to be remitted to the county. So I don't know what additional legislative steps we would need to take. I would probably defer to Jason Watkins and Justin to work through that. But certainly, the, the precedent is there. And if you look at the sales tax statute for the state, there's all kinds of special circumstances that are outlined there.
I think if we can put it on the ballot, where that we put guardrails on this, we can alleviate some of the, the concerns that Commissioner Howell says. We can say that it has to be used for property tax reduction. We don't have to say it's going to be used for culture and rec because one of the other cities may not need it for culture and rec, but they want it for reducing the property tax in their, in their city. So I, I think if we put the right guardrails on and we work collaboratively with the other cities that we could get it passed, and we could folk, each city can focus and the county can focus on what is most important to them. And for the county- And for the county, the most important thing is core services. And so we would reduce culture and rec, we would put it towards culture and rec. I, I agree that the city probably doesn't need more culture and rec funding, but they do need to reduce the mill levy. If they're talking about raising it to mils, that concerns me. So if we could offset that somehow, that would be important. So again, I, I want to work collaboratively with the other cities and, and if we write some kind of a statute that we're asking to be passed, we need to put the guardrails on it so it's used to reduce property tax.
And at the time, the one cent sales tax was passed, all of the cities that participated passed ordinances that said half of those funds would be used for property tax relief. The other half would be used for road and bridge. So there is already, I would say, a precedent even for what you're talking about with the, all of the cities that share the one cent sales tax today.
Lindsay, I, one of the things that motivates this for all of us is trying to, the core service conversation, it's trying to reduce property tax burden. One of the things that I have yet to find any data on, so we talked about those that are against things, these offsets. Nobody here is talking about increasing the net income of taxes or net payment expenditure of taxes for individuals. Talking about offsetting from property taxes to sales taxes. Many of those that are naysayers on the approach think that it's only targeting businesses or property owners. And I cannot find any data because I know for a fact that it's impacting rental markets. That those individuals, those landlords that have insurance increases and property tax increases are passing them through to rent rates. I know for a fact that happens. You know, 67214 is squarely in my district. This is a, a part of District Four that is economically has, has challenges. There are a lot of homeowners in, in 67214, but there's a lot of people that also rent homes. And I've got to be able to tell them also that this will, this is this guardrail against rising rent rates as well. Is there any data? Cause these are typically private organizations, private companies that, that are landlords. Is there any data that can help me understand the impact on rent rate?
There may be. The US Census Bureau collects a lot of data as a part of their American Community Survey, especially for areas like that, that would be in a qualified census tract. So we can try and look into that. The only issue I see is you can't guarantee that a landlord won't otherwise cause those rents to go up. So I think we can try and find that data. I just don't know that we can make any guarantees.
Yeah. Anecdotally, I have a constituent who called me a couple of weeks ago and their rent rate, they just got, their option period came in and their rent rate on their personal three bedroom, two bath duplex went up $600. And the landlords, my insurance is up, my property taxes are up, I've got to pass this through. This is not sustainable for many people, not just property owners, but also for those that, that are renting their property. We've, we've got to be aggressive in this. I think we've got to be aggressive. But I'd love to be able to tell the story of how this just isn't property owners that are being impacted, that anyone that, that, in their residence, whether you rented or you own it, is being impacted by increasing property taxes.
We'll do some research. I, I'm certain with all of the housing corporations and things out there, we can find some data somewhere.
Okay.
Locals, local associations too. The renters have an association. You can meet with a group of them. There is a, I think A plus B equals C is, you're exactly correct. If you're going to raise property taxes, you got to raise, and insurance, you're going to raise your rent. The C part of that is, will the renters hold fast on their rental rates and not increase them? Or perhaps even reduce if we would pass this? That is the unknown that we can't get to.
Yeah, certainly. I, we've had conversations with some of our organizations and I want to go, I want to discuss this publicly, the zoo exploration place. Talk about some of these community development. From a staff angle, they've heard us talk about this. What is their perception on this approach? Do they, their anxiousness on this approach? They, what is their perspective on some of these things about trying to safeguard what they do and remove their funding formula?
Well, I, I think there is, I think there is great interest in that. And I haven't talked to all groups, but EP and the zoo, we've talked about this. We have a board meeting today at the zoo. It's going to come up. I think there's interest in this. They're looking for leadership. They need, somebody has to formulate the plan and have the discussion and do the work. And I think we're poised and ready to do that. Once we get our commission on, on, running on the same side of the boat here, I think we're ready to do that. But I, I think, I think I have heard no one in the nonprofit world that we fund speak against this concept. Zero.
Okay, so. Other questions, comments? Commissioner?
I guess rather than simply, again, because money is fungible within our own budget as well as every other city's budget. You know, I'm, I'm suggesting we, we pass a resolution that, that again, it can be changed by future commissions. I can't lock them in. But it would be our intent to say that certain agencies within Central County that have historically been funded through our budget process. Again, we, we take half of our sales and use tax and put them in the same bucket as our property tax. So it's really hard to say this dollars for this and this dollars for that. But again, I would like, again, my, my idea in the past has been to create a connection between sales tax dollars and culture and white, and culture and recreational spending. We, we were now able to move forward because, again, we talked about it forever and never moved forward. I'm suggesting a resolution that would say these dozen agencies within the county that have historically been funded through our budget process, we transfer to sales tax, sales and use tax support only. This new, this new revenue stream solely supports those things, never to be supported through mill levy, property tax revenues ever again. So we would simply have a, again, that guardrail in the budget process has these dozen things have to get the money from this new sales tax. That's, again, it's a zero sum game of dollars. We know how much money is going to come in. It's got to be divided amongst those 12 and that's, that's, that's the budget for those 12. If every city would follow that same process and say, we've historically funded these certain things, like say Derby, Rock River Rapids is an example, maybe their library or whatever it is. They've got a number of parks or something. They say we've historically, we've, we funded these things for five years or longer through our budget process. And we'd like to transfer those things through a resolution to sales tax, this new sales tax revenue forever. If they would do the same thing we're going to do, then I would probably support it. Without that type of clarity, we have no idea whether or not people have just looked at this as an opportunity to do things that are essentially relieving their budget and growing ideas that they don't necessarily have to do. Discretionary spending has moved up. Is if we get all done with this and their budgets climb up because of the sales tax revenue that we're handing them, that to me is a total failure. And by the way, I think the complexity, my concern is, I think if we lean forward, this is July. We lean forward by January, we all have a plan to handle the legislature, we're moving forward. If we try to do this with 20 cities, we have a short timeline and it's a lot of very complex questions here. I think we're, we're asking for failure. I think if we muddy the waters by doing it this comprehensive way, again, there may be value there if they, if they firm up their, their proposal, if they, each one of them says, we will hand, transfer these things specifically to sales tax. And it's, that's, that's specific revenue that's, that's earmarked for only those things in every single city. If they could do that in the next five months, I guess we could do it. Otherwise, we're going to fail because in January, the session starts back up again. But we, I would like to hit the ground running. I don't want to sit there and say, we don't have a plan because we got it, we made it too complex. We weren't, we're not able to move forward. So this is a, this is a a key time where I think if we do this on our own, we can be successful in January. I don't know for sure with the complexities, asking every city to propose their exact proposal, what they're going to do, if we can do that together in five months.
I appreciate sentiment. And again, I'm, I'm fairly in agreeance with your plan. I, there's always a risk in leadership. I think that we have to lead in this regard and invite them to the table to have the conversation. I think this is what our constituents are asking us to do to collaborate better. And they may tell us, cities may tell us, hey, buzz off, do your own deal. And if they do that, I think we're pretty determined of what we want to do. I want the public to know, it's very important that, I don't, I've heard no commissioner say, we want to start raising taxes to grow government. I want every commissioner that I've heard talk about this has said, this is an offset that we hear you on property taxes. We're serious about advancing conversations. And is there, is there a plan, a concrete plan yet? No, there's not, but there is a will to have the discussion and advance it. And ultimately, the decision maker, as it should be, is the voter. The voter is going to come and the voter is going to make the decision as it should be on this. And we got to present that plan. So but the voters, the, the public needs to understand this is an offset. This is not a, a tax increase and that's not the merit of it.
I would agree. I think that the way government is functioning today isn't feasible to continue going forward. I mean, unless we're going to increase mill levy, which none of us want to do that. So I am in favor of at least talking with the cities first and having that partnership and just seeing what the desire is. And maybe we move forward without them. That's fine if that's the way it works out. But I do think just to be good partners, we should do that. But I am in favor of looking at this and really having our property taxes revolve around and focus on our core services. I think that's a great way to look at this. And, and so I'm, I'd be happy to be part of any of those conversations and pave the clear water in particular.
I, I am, sounds like there are consensus, at least to my three of you, that's fine. If these cities can firm up that proposal, so it's, it's very specific, like I'm talking about for the county. And they can do that by the end of October, Halloween. Then it gives us two months to get this out to the legislature, write the bill and get the legislator, legislators understanding in this so we can hit ground running. That seems like a good plan, but that's give us about 90 days to get this done. I think it's a lot of work in 90 days. If we don't do this by the end of October, you don't have time to get this to the legislature and actually sell them on the idea between November, December, those are busy months anyway. And if you don't have these timelines, you don't have these backwards calendar dates, we're not going to be successful. I just, I think we owe it to, you said, our constituents, our constituents are county residents across every city of Central County. Again, three, three mils or whatever the number would be is better than nothing. And I would rather be successful with three mils and, and something than sit there and say, we had this idea to do this much more complex thing, couldn't get it done. We'll try again next year. To me, if we don't have a deadline, we're not going to be successful. I don't know if you want to work on two plans at the same time and say, we have two ideas. One of them, one of them requires a lot of work. One of them is a little bit easier. And one of those plans, we're going to present it to the legislature in November. We can work on two plans, but let's not fail because we have our focus on one thing that may be more difficult and maybe not hit those dates. So how about we do two things at one time? But by the end of October, we ought to have a plan that we can start presenting to the legislature, if, if we want to be successful. And I don't, I, I really don't want to be one that just does a lot of talk once again and not any action. We've got to be successful in this. So let's, let's, let's pick our date. I think October 31st is a perfect date. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree. We need to plan as we move forward. I think we need legal and, and our finance folks to take a look at what the existing statute is on the one cent sales tax and see how that can be rewritten to meet the needs of the future. And maybe we need two ways of looking at it. I don't have a problem with that. One of my concerns is, I, I think Commissioner Howell is pushing for a resolution now on moving everything over to saying it's on sales tax, which after this all gets done, I think it'll be solved with the statute because it should be in the statute, but we're going to use it for property tax reduction. And we'll probably be using most of ours for culture and recreation. How the other cities want to do it, that's up to them. But I'm not ready to today say that, put together a resolution saying we're going to move everything over to sales tax because then everybody would say, well, you're already doing it. There's no future in, in this statute because you're putting everything in sales tax. And I know that he's already ready to, to discount anything I said, but we, we need to move through this very deliberately and make sure that we're doing it right. And I don't want to do anything like passing a resolution prematurely that might have a counter effect on getting this statute through and getting the citizens to approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. You know, I, I don't want to be misunderstood. I have been asked, actually asking for a couple of years now to do what you just talked about. That's going nowhere and I give up on that. I'm talking about going forward, if the sales tax is packaged in such a way that the voters approve it, at that point is when we would say, these things are now funded through that new revenue stream. And that's the trigger for us to transfer those things to a sales tax revenue. Not today, but if the voters agree, that's, that's the trigger for us to move in that direction. That's it. Thanks.
But the statute should say that. We don't need a resolution.
Of course it will. In fact, I'd like to be a little more crisp. I don't, and I disagree with you on one thing. I don't want to just simply say property tax relief for these other cities. I think they need to be as firm as work. I would like to say, list them in the statute. These are the things that Central County will fund through this exact revenue stream. That's what the resolution should say. It should be that crisp. If the cities are going to be part of this, should say, for every city, these are the things will be funded through this revenue stream. It should be listed in that statute. But that's what will be funded through sales tax. And then it should be that crisp because otherwise, if you're just saying simply property tax relief, honestly, no one trusts government to do that. Because money is fungible. You can say, well, I lowered the mill levy, half a mil, a quarter mil. I captured 60% or 7% or 8% of the growth. And guess what? The tax bill goes up. They're, they know how this works. If they simply say property tax relief, it, it's a game everyone plays. We have to be crisp. And I think the, the being crisp actually causes it to pass. If you simply just say property tax relief, no one gets it. No one understands it. No one's going to vote for it.
Appreciate that feedback. Tom, anything else?
Oh, yeah. Hold it. Don't, don't, don't leave yet. Free, I got three topics real quick here. One, I want to make sure, and I agree with Commissioner Howell, I think we work these two at the same time. Let me make sure on plan one. That is from our, from the county perspective, I keep hearing 3.5 mils and then 1.5 from the state potentially will. That's three things we have to talk to legislature about, that being one. Is 3.5 the right number? Can we get very fine on what that number is?
I just got corrected by our CFO. I love her, by the way. She's awesome. Sounds to me like she's saying now one mil and Central County's worth about $7 million. And so if we need about $18 million roughly, again, maybe we should fund, you know, whatever we can do with a, a specific mill. Again, I like the eighth of a cent, I'm sorry, I like the number eight of a percent. Maybe it needs to be another number. But that's it right now. Right now, unfortunately, it's two and a half mils, not three and a half mils. Again, so unfortunately, things have changed. But again, whatever we settle on in terms of what needs to be considered discretionary spending, if I tell people your property taxes are funding this.
Yeah.
They think that's a good thing or they think, oh, that's discretionary and I don't support that at all. There are some things out there. Again, I, I love our zoo, don't get me wrong, but use that as an example. People out there paying the property taxes, some people don't like us funding the zoo through that. If I tell them I'm funding streets and bridges and sheriff's office, no one says, oh, that's a bad idea or 911. Everyone agrees. So my point is, if it's on that list that says there's property taxpayers who don't think their, their property taxes should fund that type of government, then it might be on this list. And again, I can, I can think of at least a dozen things, maybe a couple more. And maybe the number should be not 18 million, maybe it should be 19 or 20 million. And so you just calculate the tax at that point at seven, seven million per mil and we can lower it by three mils, perhaps. Three mils would be $21 million. And so I'm not sure what the exact percentage of sales tax is, but let's just say it towers the discretionary spending. Whatever that number is, let's lock it in.
Okay. Well, we'll firm those numbers up, get it all to commission and, and I, I'm, I'm hearing we're moving ahead with this meeting with the 20 cities. Before that meeting, we need a list of the cities with all their current sales taxes and ask them in advance before the meeting to bring to the table their budget amount spent out of general fund, property tax dollars, what they spent to culture, arts and parks. And I'm going to come back to parks in just a little bit because that makes it different. And then we'll get this meeting set up. For the legislature, three things. One is what we just discussed and two, to do what Commissioner Dennis wanted, which is let's revisit the existing one cent sales tax formulation. And it seems counterintuitive to punish cities or counties who are reducing property tax mills and see if we could do some kind of change there. We'll get with Tanya, we'll go with Jason on that. And then two, any movement forward on this reform, how that looks in a statute and we'll craft that. So there's three different things for states.
And Tom, can I throw one thing on there? So I'm hearing the same concern from all commissioners about the way the sales tax is managed. And one thing we might also ask the legislature for, because we have had success, is the creation of a separate fund to administer these dollars through so that it is very easily trackable and accountable and it's less fungible than the rest of the budget. And we could do that as a part of the, the statute asked to Jason.
I'm seeing this on our platform, exactly. All of this, we would lay all this out, begin to work with Watkins, lay all this out on our platform. Okay.
And my only other concern, based on what you just said, manager, I, I'm concerned that if a city is currently funding their own, say, for example, their own parks or culture, whatever, through sales taxes of their own city. And they simply want to transfer that now to the county sales tax fund and then frees up their own sales tax for other things. It has the same net effect of creating a larger budget for themselves. I want them to reduce property taxes. So I don't know how to connect, I don't know how to make that clear. But if they are currently using sales taxes and then it frees up sales taxes to fund something else in the city, that, that is not, that's not my goal. I want to see their property taxes go down and not grow anything. I don't know how to make that clear, but I'm concerned about a city playing that game where they would simply I'm concerned about a city playing that game where they would simply yeah, and using sale, their own sales taxes for something, transferring that to the county if this was passing, which then frees up their sales taxes for something that they, some other pet project.
We'll work with Jason Watkins and Justin Wagner to craft language to, I think everybody here is fundamentally agreeing with that statement. So, okay. The only thing I wanted, and we don't have to decide this day, the addition or subtraction of parks into this is fascinating. Because in the county world, parks are 1.8 or, you know, we
But that's just operational. It doesn't include capital investment.
Yeah. Which is another thing, what, what's operational and then what's capital. And if you look at our small park, park structure, you look at something like City of Wichita, even Derby that are, they have tremendous amounts of money flowing into parks. They view, and I don't want to speak for the city, but I mean, I come from a city, it was all, that's viewed as a core service. And that's the jump, the leap that you can make. And that's, I think you have to dialogue that with cities to see how they feel. And then City of Wichita is running golf, which is a whole nother animal budgetarily and has its own challenges.
Is that an enterprise fund, Tom?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. Okay.
So things to think about as we position for the debate with the, for the discussion with the cities. We'll get our numbers ready. So you go in with a clean slate, a clean set of numbers on what we are asking for and what the county stands on it is, then we could listen to them. So.
I just wanted to ask if we could talk timeline. I heard Halloween, which just so everyone knows, it's exactly 100 days away. If you saw my Facebook this morning, you would know that. But one of my concerns with that is we have a lot happening with ARPA. And wrapping up year end on that, our goal is to make sure we know exactly where we stand by about that timeline so that we have November and December to clean up anything and do revenue replacement. We're also going to be doing our quarterly financials at that point in time and a fairly significant report to the treasury. And so would it be possible to consider maybe a December 1st end goal for, to have all of this complete, to have both options flushed out from a staff perspective? So we have both option, I mean, we will have it firm and done, but I'm just, I'm concerned about that October 31st date with the conversations.
I think that's a really, I'm sorry, Lindsay, I missed your text, but I think that's a really good question for Jason Watkins to weigh in on. Because I agree, we do earlier is always better. But there comes a sweet spot in there sometime in December where you've got the legislature attention. We can do regional work with our local people. But I would think that was a, is a, we can get clarity on that from Mr. Watkins maybe and give us some suggestions on it. What would be an efficient timeline? All of this, everything moving forward on either of two plans is contingent on legislature to some degree. So I think we have to position this in such a way that it gives us the best way forward. If you're okay with that, Commissioner?
Yeah, I, I'm very much in support of a, of a timeline being set. I think we absolutely have to have, you're 100% correct. And, uh, but I also want to be sensitive to your guys' needs too. So why don't we get some input from Jason? And I think that's a, that's a good idea. You are 100% right. We've got to work on a timeline.
I always like to set shorter dates and then concede to pragmatic dates perhaps. If we, if we're enough, again, we, we can concede to December 1st at some point in the process, but we've picked that date today. It really has to be December 1st because that only gives us maybe two weeks to actually talk. So let's go ahead and set an appointment with our legislative. There's a lot of those folks are not even going to have contents, you know, they have no contest. This should have already won. I think to pick a date that says, we're going to meet with them for this purpose. I would set that date now around sometime in the first week or two of December, say, we have a proposal. Here's what we want to do and, and, and we should give that, save the date out today so that we have a, we're going to, we're going to present with them, present to them, whichever plan is ready to be presented. But I don't want to, I don't want to concede to December 1st and then try to get these guys together. Today, I think that earlier is better. But again, if you, if it doesn't happen till December 1st, that's, I guess that is what it is, but I mean, at least pick a date, first week or so of December for us to get together with South Central.
Finance excels at meeting deadlines. So we'll have what we need.
All right. Thanks. Very good.
Back to October 31st. I think we're, I'm, we're good.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis?
Okay, then we change gears.
I'm okay. Everybody done with this topic for now? It was a good, good discussion.
Lynn Packer and I yesterday attended Quad County meeting and they're facing all the same issues as we are just on a smaller scale. And so they're very interested in property tax relief. They're also interested in the funding that's going to the tag office. It's coming out of property tax right now. And so I learned that the new chairman of KAC is Frank Williams and he is emergency medical services in Butler County. So he asked, what kind of things do we want on the KAC leg, the agenda that's coming up? And so I didn't know that was coming up, but I mentioned ADD to try and get that on, on there so that they recognize that we have a waiting list now with a cap on it. And we still have a lot of people waiting a long time. I mentioned property tax relief. I mentioned the tag office. And so, and I did learn one thing. I, I've been hearing all along that Sedgwick County was the last one. Butler County still is not, they told me they're still not funding that out of property tax right now. It's what they told me yesterday. So we may not be the last one. But we know for a fact that 600,000 or 700,000 this, this year and 900 or so next year. So it's a, it's an important one. And so as we develop our legislative agenda, some of these things that are important, we probably ought to get over to Frank Williams and KAC to make sure that they put it on the legislative agenda also to help support us in, in our efforts to reduce property tax. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very good.
Oh, by the way, we're hosting the next Quad County, so I'm going to pass that over. Thank you.
When is that? When is the next scheduled?
Three months from now.
We'll schedule it. Very good. Tom, anything else? Buddy, it was Stephanie. Okay. I think we're good. See you tomorrow morning, 9:00 AM. Thanks.